You're all right. Thank you. All right, we live?
Give her one second. There you go.
Okay, all right, um, we'll start the meeting with a pledge, you guys want to stand up? All right, first on the agenda. A and I request by Grazier for private oversight LLC for Compass Lane Project. Is that a similar story here?
Yes. And Attorney Tree is here, if you have any questions, I thought Trevor was gonna be here, so.
Likewise.
We'll wing it.
So. I'll just say if you have any desk engineering questions, maybe we'll continue this to the next. Uh, meeting if it's fairly straightforward, then maybe we can approve today.
I think it was fairly straightforward.
All right, so let's see. Where is the actual A and R you're trying to raise it here? Parcel A.
Yeah, so parcel tract A through tract F. Across the dotted municipal boundary.
Well, we got.
Tract A through tract F across the dotted municipal boundary on the Templeton side.
So the way I understood it Kirk, when I was talking to Trevor and. If you want me to be quiet, I will. They're becoming the lots in Templeton are part of. What's being built in Gardner, so it'll just be land behind. That line as part of the lots.
So all the frontage will be in Gardner?
Correct.
It's just the back lot, back land will be subdivided, okay.
And the back lot will be passive use, which means there is no structure going on the back lots.
It makes tax time much easier.
So yeah, so that's all.
That's all backland, right, from these lots, which.
Right.
I've left a subdivision, right? But away from. So it's not parcel A.
I think parcel A is actually.
So tract A is to be conveyed with parcel B. So there's a tract versus a parcel. Uh, the tracts are all on Templeton side.
So this is gonna be part of B, but it's not a building lot.
So are all these individual lots then?
No. They're part. When you say individual lots. The frontage is in Gardner and then the back part is Templeton, so it's all one lot Gardner Templeton. Front to back.
But tract, but tract A, B, C is all connected, so it's. So like tract B is part of lot one. It's just that parcel, the, the back portion of that.
Right, tract C would be back of lot two, is that what we were looking at?
That's what I'm looking at.
Tract D, the back of lot three.
Yes, and that's why each tract is labeled to be conveyed with its Gardner lot.
Attorney Tree, would you like one of the bigger ones to look at?
Would.
I'll bring it to you, thank you.
Hello, my question is that they're all separate lots. Whole bunch of several lots, right? That don't conform to anything, because it's no hunches, no bodies, no. Even though it's technically connected to that, it's still. We're creating. Basically six lots that. Are all non-conforming.
Where now they're all connected to the main parcel.
Correct.
You should also know that I did not have Ms. Tivano write a check yet, because. This is different than what I've usually been exposed to, so.
Has this plan been recorded yet?
No, the uh, Superior Court issued its stipulation of dismissal and order of dismissal today. So the. And so the Gardner approved subdivision needs to be reported with that. Court decree, so that will for uh, happen forthwith, um, so this is not yet a recorded plan.
I don't know if we can act on a plan that's not recorded yet. Because what are we giving it to, which off we go?
It is the.
Um, that really technically are subdivided yet.
So chapter forty-one, section eighty-one L says on an approved subdivision, it does not say recorded. And if the. Uh, board wants to withhold its approval for a couple of days until the recording is submitted, that's certainly.
We have twenty-one days to render a decision anyway, so.
You do.
Um, seeing how it's been formally submitted. Did I?
Yesterday.
Yesterday? Okay.
This is one or two?
Twenty-two. It's area one. I might know what they wanna do, it's not an issue, but I just don't know if we can do it on a plan that's not um. Approved, not recorded, I think that's a potato potato kinda thing, because if it doesn't get recorded, it doesn't go through, then we chopped up a bunch of. Backlots. We created a bunch of non-conforming laws.
So. If you'd like.
Yeah, we can just wait for the recording and then.
I could have you just email me a copy of the page showing it's recorded, the booking page number, and then we can go from there.
And if you can encourage Trevor's participation at the next meeting, that'd probably be pretty good too.
Something must have happened, because he had every intention of being here.
Usually pretty.
He's good. But what I can do. Is put it on your next agenda. Which is May thirteenth.
And.
I know you can't be here.
I will leave it to Mr. Clutchman.
Okay, yeah, okay.
As I think is usually appropriate when A and R plans.
It is.
Better to see the engineer than the attorney.
Yeah, because here, when you get out here to the. That's what I'm trying to. Confused here, we started, when does it turn to Gardner and Templeton over here? Is this Templeton on this side of the line?
I would.
Yeah.
If you see the dash, dot, dot, dash, dot, dot, that's the municipal boundary, I also wanna point out that. At the front near Patriots Road, that corner that is marked Schaefer is not owned. Um, by the applicant, that is owned by the butter.
Oh, the Schaefer parcel is.
Yes, that's.
Correct?
Yes, correct.
So this is the line right here, then it cuts right straight through across Patriots Road then too, right? Looks like it.
Yes, the municipal boundary, um. I believe there's, uh, you'd see the square with the town line bound.
Yeah.
Um, so extends from there towards uh, upper, I'm gonna call it northeast.
So parcel A is actually in Gardner, then that's not in Templeton.
Parcel A is in Gardner.
Okay, well. Why don't we go down the checklist anyways, Charlie? You get all that?
Yep.
Okay. Let's pick through the checklist first.
We have four copies of form, uh, designation of the plan by name of owner of record and location of the landing question.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Uh, the statement approval under the subdivision control law not required.
Yep.
Zoning classification and location to any zoning district.
I did see that area one on his.
So that is note number two.
Yeah, there is, that's nice.
Uh, in the case of creation of a new lot, the remaining land area and frontage of the land in the ownership of the applicant, if any.
That's it, so read that one again, that's a.
I know, exactly. In the case of creation of a new lot, the remaining land area and frontage of the land in the ownership of the applicant, if any.
It would have to be recognized by the law, and so I'd say, yeah, you know what I mean?
Uh, notice of any decision by the zoning board of appeals.
None in Templeton or Gardner that are relevant.
Uh, names of any abutters.
Yeah, the Schaefer's on there, that's the only butter, I think. Yeah, you got several, yeah, okay, yeah.
Uh, distance nearest permanent monument.
Yeah, there's plenty of them.
Uh, location of all existing buildings, including setback inside and rear yard designation. Uh, location of any easement or way, public or private across the land with a designation as the use of the same.
It doesn't really apply.
We have four copies of Form A, we have four copies of A and R, description of lots. Fee. That's gonna be decided, this is gonna be the interesting one. Uh, all lots of them, but a qualified way.
So the way they're deeding it. It is one lot. Combined. And will be recorded that way when purchased.
But it's not technically a qualified way until the road's um, either in or bonded.
Yeah, it isn't really.
It's a qualified way, um, because it's a way that's under eighty-one L, it's a way that's on an approved subdivision plan and. Um, your point being taken regarding the recording. Um, certainly, once the recording has been done of that approved subdivision plan.
Yeah, I think once it's recorded, it's a little bit.
On a qualified way, and I would note that your rules do not refer to a way existing in Templeton. They do not state that it needs to be away in Templeton.
Yeah, but it's still not a way, to find, until it's recorded, it's not a way, so we can worry about that when we come back to it.
All lots have adequate frontage.
Um, well, the, the primary lot, I, I would assume would be so, it's not really applicable being background. You know, so I would say, yeah, that's fine.
Uh, vital access exists to each lot.
Once again, it will.
Uh, all lots have adequate acreage.
That doesn't really depend because of its background. Cause they're all gonna be to be conveyed, so.
And just to confirm, note one does state very bluntly that these are non-buildable in Templeton.
Well, they're not buildable on their own, not saying somebody can't still build on them later on, you know. Incidental buildings, what have you, you know, they don't have to be deemed non-buildable, um, because their. Primary lot's gonna be in Gardner, so it doesn't prevent somebody from. Pull a building from it on the back land, you know, which works in their favor versus against them, you know, I don't know why they label them as. Non-buildable. Yeah, shed, a pool, you know, garage. Still possible, but. But. I think for the. Future homeowners, they. Might wanna argue that language ahead of time. That's working in their favor and against them, you know.
So if that is, if that is across the line in Templeton, then the request would be to the Templeton Building Inspector.
Right at that time. Yeah.
And they would determine that.
Yeah, I don't know how they do that cross jurisdiction stuff, but yeah. Um, doesn't make somebody's land unbuildable, cause you gotta imaginary line in the backyard, so. So, okay, all right, Charlie, what else you got?
That's it.
That's it, okay.
The, I guess the. These are lots.
We would normally be three hundred dollars for each lot created, but it. That's where I was confused.
I mean, it is six separate lots.
It's just separate lots, yeah, so it should be eighteen hundred bucks.
Which is what Trevor and I talked about, and then I said I didn't wanna do anything until.
But because I, I think it is because they are all.
Six different lots, cause you don't have, you didn't have to come and do them all, you could've done one here and one there, it didn't really matter, but it's an individual lot, so.
So I would, it would be uh, eighteen hundred.
And then I would say, um. With that being said, then just have to take a motion to kick this to the next meeting, so we can get a couple of, uh. Um, wait for this recording, um, to happen, most of today's date.
Twenty-ninth.
So with a. The thirteenth?
Thirteenth.
Yeah.
May thirteenth?
So I'm, am I making a motion that we approve it, or are we making a motion to?
We'll just stay what, until, we'll take it under advisement, what have you, until the.
Continue it.
So continue it to the thirteenth, we'll render a decision.
I would make the motion that we continue, um. Discussion of plans to the May thirteenth meeting.
Yeah. For private oversight LLC.
Yes.
Anybody?
Why are we, if these lots are not compliant with our, why are we moving it to the next meeting?
To make sure.
The plan's not recorded yet.
Right.
So in order to be on a qualified way, anybody can have an approved plan, but if it's not recorded, it's. It's not. Otherwise, we're just cutting up lots that don't really.
Right, we, cause these aren't. Compliant with our.
No, but they're second, they're secondary lots. They're the back lots of the, they're gonna be garden, the, the address is gonna be in garden, of the new proposed subdivision. So this is just their backland, which happens to be in Templeton.
That will go with the.
It says right on each one, so it could be to be conveyed to that lot, to be conveyed to that lot, so on and so forth.
Okay.
Cause without, without us endorsing it, it's just, those lines don't exist, it's just one block of land, so they need to separate them onto the other lots, so. I mean, it's. Standard practice, just some of the language doesn't work, because. Um, like I said, I would not deem them non-buildable, but that's.
Well, for our meeting, our requirements, they are.
They meet our requirements, yeah, cause Garden is basically taking the primary, which is the addresses, and so we would do the same.
Front lots meet Gardner's requirements.
The front lots meet Gardner's requirements, um, most of them alone, some of them with the addition of these backlot.
Yeah.
Um, and the, uh. If you would like to have it, um, this question was raised under Gardner's planning board when the subdivision was being. Um, uh, discussed. And there is a, a, some case law and an opinion letter that I've given them. It's passive use, so it's only use is to meet the acreage requirements in Gardner. Um, and therefore it's allowable. It's one of the issues that unfortunately arises when you have lots split between two cities or two districts. Um, but you're, if you would like to have it, you're welcome to a copy of that letter with the discussion.
I do know this has been a practice before, because on Patriots Road across the.
Well, we've done it before, I have no problem doing what we said.
Yep.
I just film a couple, show you on the recording plans. Um, cause then you can refer to book and page and the whole plan all at the same time, cause other than that, you're just referring to a plan. Yeah, just as a reference number in an engineer's draw somewhere.
Yep.
Or at least once it hits. Once it's stamped, you have something to go by, anybody does.
No objection to waiting for the recording.
Yeah, okay.
Tomorrow.
Um, so, um. All right, post a maiden secondhand discussion on it, seeing none, all in favor, moving into the next meeting. Yeah, unanimous. Okay.
I'll just make pile. Put it back together, I'll start.
Summonation and resolution for meeting law complaint against myself. So I guess Charlie, you take it from there, yes? As long as, no, no.
However you wanna do this.
I'll let Charlie take it, yeah. Go.
Okay.
Go, Joe.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Um, so there, uh, this is the same client, this is private oversight, uh, Joanne Tivano is the member manager, there were two. Open meeting law complaints that were filed, one was for the February twenty-fifth planning board meeting, the other one was for the March eleventh planning board meeting. Um, as to the February twenty-fifth meeting, uh, the topic of, um, the Gardner approval. Or, or continuing proceedings, um, regarding this subdivision in Gardner before its planning board. Were discussed without any item, uh, associated on the agenda. Um, this, uh, this of course is a violation of open meeting law. The allegation was made during the meeting that, um, it would not be a violation, because it would be new business. Not only is that not sufficient to, um, describe a matter on the agenda under the open meeting law. Um, there was no new business listed on the agenda, so there was no such item on the agenda. Um, the discussion was regarding a February eleventh, twenty twenty-five Gardner Planning Board meeting. So, um, this was also not a topic that was not unforeseeable by the chair or by the board. Um, and I just, uh, wanna point out that, uh, Ms. Griffiths. Um, from the select board was here and she did identify the issue, which I do appreciate, um, her recognition. Um, uh, I'm gonna say this here, and I'm gonna say it in the next, uh, complaint. Planning boards, as you all know, are usually discussing petitions before them, there are very specific notice requirements. And you do not usually have an owner's property being discussed without adequate notice to them, or them initiating the meeting. Um, for both of these reasons and for the. Violation of open meeting law, it was inappropriate to have this discussion at the February twenty-fifth meeting. My client did not have any opportunity to appear or to make a statement regarding her own project. It's, it's very unusual for that to happen in a planning board. Um, we're asking that in-person training be provided and completed by the chair. Um, and that an acknowledgement of the violation be made by the chair. Um, on March eleventh, we again had discussion of a topic not adequately described on the agenda. So the agenda descriptions did have an item, and it was called private oversight. Private Oversight, um, LLC. The discussion chair update on private oversight LLC project, the property address was not mentioned. Um, this discussion was about whether or not to appeal the subdivision decision by the Gardner Planning Board. Um, that, uh, discussion involving litigation should have been further described on the agenda. In addition, um, one of the board members again noted, you did not actually have the decision before you. Um, so the board itself was not adequately apprised of what the decision was that was made. Um, again, the same resolution is what we're requiring. Uh, completion of in-person training regarding open meeting law provisions and acknowledgement of the violation. And that is it, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, well, the way I look at it is this. You're doing business in Gardner, we do business in Templeton. And if something's affecting the citizens of Templeton and not directly affecting. Your applicant, I don't even know who your applicant is, I don't have an address, I don't have a mailing address. And I look up for the town, the town of Templeton, and the people of town of Templeton. And that's why we was, we're hoping to, and I'm still working with Mass Highway, when you go for your. Whenever you go file for your, 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 your road permit going in there. Um, if yourself, your client, you guys choose to put money before safety. Then I'm gonna fight as much as I can to prevent it for the, for the citizens of town, and somebody, prevent somebody from getting killed down there in this section. So, am I gonna apologize? Absolutely not. Am I gonna bring this up every time I can? Absolutely, I'm trying to bring awareness to a, 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 a very. Dangerous situation that you and your client are bringing right to the borders of town of Templeton. So if it gets brought up at a meeting, and I choose to bring up. Um, it to discuss it with whoever it is in the audience that wants to bring it up to us, I'm gonna bring it up. It's as simple as that, I don't, it's no different than if I say, hey, do you see, hear what happened in Framingham yesterday, and talk about it a little bit. I don't know who they are, I don't know who the players are, but we're gonna discuss it, and I think we're. You got reg, you got regs up here, you know, you know, this is, we, we all do this, all volunteer work, we don't get paid for it. I'm sure you're here tonight for free, of course, um, unlike us, um, who make absolutely nothing at all. We make the best decisions we could, with what we have, it's in front of us, but damn it. I'm not gonna apologize to anybody for making the best decision I thought was for the town of Templeton. And do you think I'm gonna sit here and do a. A forced, whatever you call it, a, um, public meeting violation law, whatever, no. You wanna pay me to do it? You wanna pay me to do it?
I'm going to take a moment just to respond.
Yeah, go ahead.
I also serve as the chair of the zoning board in my town for zero money.
That's good.
Excuse me, I get a stipend of one hundred and fifty dollars a month. We have calculated out to be two, about two dollars and thirty-seven cents an hour.
Yeah, I believe it.
That's more than we.
What town, if you don't mind me asking?
Pittsburgh.
Pittsburgh, okay.
Yes.
See, you know what I'm talking?
I try very hard to abide by the open meeting law. It is inconvenient sometimes, because we wanna open a discussion.
We do too.
With the people who are there before us, but we all have to abide by it. And your violation was not meaningless, I understand you want to advocate for the residents of your town.
Yeah.
And you very, um, forcefully did that at a number of Gardner Planning Board meetings.
Right, which I took upon myself to go.
But having that discussion here, without affording the owner of the property. An opportunity to present their port side of the case is not an appropriate discussion. And it is a violation of open meeting law, and it should not be repeated, no matter how much our emotions drive us.
How could I afford them? The, the time to reflect on it, where I got shut down in Gardner, basically saying that Templeton has absolutely zero jurisdiction over this subdivision. Okay, so what is your, what is your client gonna defend in Templeton, when I got told in Gardner that I have zero jurisdiction over it?
So let's go through what actually happened in Gardner.
I know what happened, cause I was there.
This project has been before Gardner for three years in various forms.
Oh, that I didn't know, okay.
There was a preliminary subdivision, and then there was the definitive subdivision. And you appeared, I believe, at two of the meetings. And you were heard. Um, your comments were mainly surrounding the entrance to the roadway. And the traffic study. There were a total of three traffic studies done. There was an initial one, there was an updated one, and after you appeared at the meeting and made comments of concern. The Gardner Planning Board took that into account, and it ordered a third-party review of that traffic study.
Mm-hmm.
That was done. The applicant was required to respond to any concerns raised. That was done, and you heard that because you were present for the meeting. So this description of your complaints fell on deaf, deaf ears is not true. Your complaints are not supported by any traffic study. Your complaints are supported by your experience of driving down that road.
Mm-hmm.
That is not a traffic study, it is not in a professional opinion.
Let me ask you this then.
Yes.
Why is your, why is your, 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 your client so adamant about. Running on the danger line versus sliding the road down like they could have all along?
So, because it is not dangerous, and you received this answer again at the planning board meeting. If the road were moved closer down towards Gardner, as you had stated that you wanted.
Mm-hmm.
The line of sight would be reduced from where it is right now. And it would in fact be more dangerous to do what you are suggesting than to do what they have laid out. But this is a mass DOT issue.
I know it is.
Templeton is going to have its opportunity. To raise its concerns.
Oh, I know.
Will decide.
I'm waiting for you guys to file, I've already been in contact with them.
Yep.
And I will not invite you to the meeting, if they call me, I'm going to a meeting, I'm not inviting anybody.
That's a full opportunity for Templeton to raise its concerns and mass DOT is going to make the decision. Yeah.
No, I, um, I get it. I just said, I'm, I'm not apologizing for looking out for the citizens of Templeton and for Gardner, basically to general public.
There are.
Simple as that.
There are four rebutters who have consistently appeared at every planning board meeting. They are all from Templeton. They all oppose the project being built in any way. I'm going to suggest to you that what has happened here is instead of them taking their money and filing an appeal of Gardner's decision, which they could have done. Templeton's money has been used to file that decision and to pursue this issue because those rebutters don't want the project built. It's not my business how Templeton spends its money.
What, what, Templeton, I don't, I didn't follow you on that, the rebutters in the Templeton thing. What'd you say? The four rebutters you said, okay, but what, what do they have to do with town of Templeton, you said?
There are four rebutters from the town of Templeton that you know, because you've been to these meetings and you've spoken to them.
Yeah, I've seen people there. Yeah.
One of them was the one who raised the new business issue.
Okay.
Um, who oppose this project. They oppose it being built.
We're here all the time. Yeah, we get.
Yes, that's, that happens. And what I'm suggesting is this was inappropriate because they should have filed their own appeal, not use Templeton and Templeton's money to file an appeal of the subdivision.
They didn't.
I understand and, uh, we have now resolved that issue, um, between the two towns. And the issue will be discussed by mass DOT.
Right, okay.
Um, but I, I certainly, I these are OML violations. If you want to, if you believe that it was appropriate for you to violation, violate the open meeting law, go ahead, you know? Um, but they were violations and we're asking that you acknowledge that they were in fact violations.
Well, they were violation, they were violation. I'm not going to apologize for it because what I felt at the time when I was doing was within my rights to do so, so. You know, I'm not going to sugarcoat it any more than that.
Well, I think that's why the training is needed so that you know when it is within your right to do so and when it is not. Um.
So just for clarification, are you directed at the chairman, not the board in general?
This at the general planning board, no.
Okay. However, I will be providing training for everybody.
Okay.
And they're in your packets and we can do it at your convenience.
Excellent.
So is your client going to pay for this unjust burden on us now?
I'm not going to have the client pay for your violation of the open meeting law.
Okay.
That's fine. We'll keep pushing our way. You keep pushing your way then. I think we're pretty good.
I suggest to you, that's not the greatest.
Don't make assumptions to me. You represent her and not me.
Yeah, right now I'm running the meeting, so I do appreciate your time coming in. Thank you very much. So we will work with Lori to uh, have times for everyone to be able to, uh, come in for training.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and I'll look for an update from Ms. Wida. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Lori, uh, continue. Sorry, I wanted to do Matt. Still a clerk, shall I say? Hi, was he already, Matt's already been here before?
So.
All right.
Let me give you a quick overview. Matt was here during the, what we will call the COVID times.
Yes.
The COVID times. And he started with a project to build a pavilion on his property. That is no longer exactly the plan. What he would like to do is in place of that, he would like to temporarily put up a very robust tent.
Forty by eighty time, but you know, like a wedding time, so.
And in order to do that, he needed to come back before the planning board. So I pulled out his old file. The plans are in there. There's a review in there by Wes Fless. What I was hoping or thinking, and I don't know if you can do this or not, that where the tent would be probably a temporary situation. Is there any way that he can do that while finishing this?
What did the building inspector say?
The building inspector is the one who said that he had to come back before the planning board. And that's because of, well, the the plan is in there. The overview is in his file. The application.
All approved? The original pavilion, all that, was that ever approved?
I would say he was.
And it was, it was almost there, but then COVID went, it all went to hell.
I think what happened was he had his review, Wes did his review, peer review.
Are you talking when Wes was our peer review agent at the time?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So that's in there and the application for the tent is in that file too, if you want to look at it. Um, I don't know where to take it from that point. Um, or what the.
Need to start fresh with a plan or something to see what we.
Nope, that's what you just did.
What's that?
The red file.
Oh, this is real.
Yep.
I'm assuming we went through all of the parking, lighting, blah, blah, all that stuff.
I don't know.
I, I remember.
Spacing, space, you know, I talked to Mike Bennett about a crosswalk. There's, a lot of this was done.
Right.
DVW, I talked to them about it as well.
Do we have the notes from Wes of the review? Okay.
It's right here, actually, on April second, twenty twenty. He's saying what it consisted of. Reviewed. The following is listed comments generated during our review. The plan should be stamped and endorsed by a licensed civil engineering, uh, civil engineer in common with the mass. Number two, a scale of a plan is labeled at one and thirty inches, which is not measured correctly on the copy of the plan sent to his office. The plan should show proposed two-foot contours, proposed elevations are called out for gravel parking lot and concrete pads and a slope. Is shown for the driveway to handicap spaces, contours will show the limits of disturbance throughout the project site. It appears the grading limits of the gravel parking lot will extend into the layout of Berry Road. And the grading limits of the concrete pad require fill of the slope to the west of the concrete pad and possibly into a hundred-foot buffer zone to an existing pond. Um,
It's on the back.
Nope. You're mentioning the parking spots, access aisles, driveways should be added to the plan. The driveway into the parking spaces should be wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic. Handicap spaces that provide it are required to have um, hatched access, um, spaces adjacent to the parking spaces for the ADA standards. Um, should shows proposed spot grades on the plan. Number five, post concrete pad is shown over a country drain of easement. Does easement language allow for a permanent structure to be constructed over easement? Numerous spot grades do not, um, coordinate with existing contour plans. No erosion control measures are shown on the plan. Um, once, uh, entire limits of disturbance are determined, the applicant must file for a stormwater management permit for distribution, uh, disturbance, uh, to the property equal or greater to one acre. In this case, the project should, would require to meet applicable standards of the stormwater management by law, section three. And no stormwater calculations were, were, um, provided with the application. So the conclusion above comments are offered to the board as a guide in your decision-making process. Please note that the above comments may require additional information from the applicant and possible revisions to the to be made to the plans. As a result, additional comments and clarifications may be needed. So.
Can I?
Yeah.
Address some of that? So in twenty twenty, there was a pavilion in sight. Um, the pavilion idea is there. Uh, what I proposed in my own head was to just temporarily put a, a seasonal tent up and, you know, put porta potties and that kind of thing. Until I have enough money to build a tent to put the pavilion on. Um, I need power over there. And I can't get any power from the town until Sweeney approves that and he can approve that until what's his name? Hanks says I need a building permit for building that I'm not building. So this is where I'm, I'm at a spot here that I don't know what to do because I don't want to put my building up right now, but I want to put the tent in a similar area. But I just, this is going to be a seasonal tent. And for, for, I don't know, a number of years, could be two years. I was going to put it up, hang it down in the fall.
What's the purpose of the tent though, Matt?
I'm going to do roadside barbecue. I do roadside barbecue up, up right up front there and it's, it's too close to the road. So I'm just going to put it downhill a little bit and just have it, uh, under there on Friday nights. And, uh, and that's it for the most part. Um, and I, 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 I'm at a point that he needed a building permit, but I'm like, I'm not putting a building right now and I don't know where.
It's because of the size of the.
So we decided to at least address this and all that watershed and all that else. I will happily take care of when the time comes, but right now it's not, I'm not going to do that. You know, I'm just.
So what you want to do now isn't really in the footprint of what you were proposing.
Correct, correct. I'm not, you know, that's going to happen, but it'll happen in due process.
Can you get us a new plan showing what you want to do now? Doesn't have to be a real crazy plan, but something, we need something to basically look at.
I, I guess, well, let me ask you a question. When, when somebody has a wedding and they put a tent up, what, what pro, what process does that has to happen?
Uh, well, it's usually private property. It's a residence.
Yeah.
You know, you, you're talking commercial, so it's altogether different because you're already a commercial business. So.
Really? I guess, well, I'm just thinking like, if you're, it's obviously part of his existing business now. It's there.
Right.
So it's just basically erecting a tent on the site.
Yeah, I mean, in other words, like I used to have it under an umbrella next to the picnic tables.
Yeah.
I'm just putting a tent up and putting the picnic tables under that and even getting rid of the umbrella. It's all new. You know, I got porta potties set up and that's all that's happening.
Right. So really, at this point now, I, I think it's, it's not a whole brain of site plan. It's just, it's adding a tent to what is already there.
So I mean, I know, I know, I, I get what he wants to do. I'm just, um, I really just, I would I guess we're going to, I'm going to have to talk to Mr. Hanks on it and see what we can come to.
Yeah, because this, I mean, my only pickle is I, I need some power down it and I can't run it off electrical, you know, I get more things I need, you know, lights and things like that. I just, you know, I, I just, I don't know what to do because I, 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 he came, he's the one who needed a building permit for a building that I'm not putting up. It didn't make any sense to me.
Right. So if it's okay with you, I'll, I'll, if it's okay with you, I'll get a hold of the building commissioner and see if we can just go down and do a, a quick site walk with you or something like that, just to see. That's right with the board. I'll go down and see what we got. And then I can talk it over with Mr. Hanks on site.
Yeah.
Find out what we feels.
Right.
Sufficient and then.
Right. Because obviously we're getting into the season, so if we can try to get.
And I do tell you this, the, the, I, and I, I'm not overstepping boundaries, but I had.
Oh, yeah, you are. Be careful.
Yeah, I know. We're all set with that. Um, I have one day from the tech company to install it and it's tomorrow. I'm putting the tent up. It's going to go up. It's the sites there. You can, we can walk around and tend to that. I have no other choice. If I don't get it up tomorrow, it's not going. And that's that. So I, I have to do that. Um, it was the only day they had and I suggested a whole month.
Anybody needs a permit to put a tent up, do they?
It's based on the size.
What's that?
It's based on the size.
You know, everybody can accept.
And the fire chief has already looked at.
Yeah, and you approve.
What he had to do. And he, he's, he's good. So.
Somebody puts a big tent up for a wedding or something like that at the house.
It's just.
Permits and all this, man, do they?
Yeah, they do.
They do.
Depending on the size of the tent.
I thought maybe the tent company or someone would be, no.
Usually they file.
Okay, I did not know that.
My tent's over fifty years.
Yeah.
Your tent's not that big.
Yeah.
Wasn't that big?
No, he's a bit larger. Dennis, you have something to say? Sorry.
I hope it's not a windy day when you do that.
Well, he's.
These guys are good. They, you pay them a lot of money, so they.
Windy days, they're good for putting the tent up because.
They also, they also, uh, they, they, they say if there's a problem, they'll, like, they'll connect yesterday. So it's worth the money.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Those are big guys. So.
Well, put it up and I'll talk to, I'll talk to Dick because I, I don't know if he's interested more in the from us, the traffic flow, the parking, that kind of thing, or, or.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing really going to change.
I'll call him tomorrow, see what he says and see what we can.
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is I, I just need power.
Right.
And I, all this can just be put table. I, I don't need any of it.
Right. And you can take a ten down in winter anyways, because it's not.
Absolutely. It's going to come down probably, but I have to live. I'll just go down. It's just going to do that. But, uh, I need power there and there's the dominoes. The dominoes is, I need Hanks to say yes, so we can tell Sweeney and then Sweeney tells the light company and the light company puts the power off.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's, yeah, because eventually that power is going to be for this. This is kind of an eventual thing. So I really, I, I, it's kind of new terrain for me. I don't really know where we're at.
It's worth going, right? Straight behind your building.
Yeah, halfway from Berry Road down to the pond. There's, there's been a pad there for, well, since twenty twenty. Yeah, so, yeah, it's been there.
All right.
Um.
Everybody's fine with that?
If you don't mind.
I'll get a hold of, I'll get a hold of.
I'll do whatever's going to have to happen. As long as I don't, I just need power.
Right.
You know, so.
Do you have Matt's cell phone number? Do you want to call him before you go?
I have that somewhere.
Yeah, he does. Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I'll give, I'll give, I'll give Dick a call, Mr. Hanks a call and.
Appreciate that.
Reach out to you.
Okay, that's all I can ask. Yeah.
All right.
Okay, guys. Thanks a lot.
Lori, thank you. Take care.
Have a good day. Yeah, you too. I'm going to go have some supper.
Can you make me some too?
I can.
Actually, you can.
Right.
All right, number continues like three hundred. Oh, that was Matt. Okay. Uh, hear and provide comments on citizen petition to amend. Oh, Lori, you got this here, number two?
Yep. Do you want me to read this?
What's that?
It was properly advertised. The, in your packet are the, um, draft warrant and the draft floodplain. It's also advertised in the newspaper and sent to, the notice was sent to all of our neighboring towns and cities.
What page are we on on the?
On the warrant?
Yeah.
You're going to go to the back where there is twenty-five, number twenty-five, number twenty-six, number twenty-seven.
Yep.
It is a public hearing, so you do need to open it as a public hearing if you would like me to read the notice that went into the paper.
We sound like an article twenty-five, you said?
Yes.
I'm in the code.
Do you want me to open a public hearing?
We need to open a public hearing.
Oh, right now? I'd make a motion that we open a public hearing.
I'm second to that.
All right. Fortune made second, any discussion? Being done, all in favor? Right, you're in this. Thank you. Uh, all right.
Charlie can read the notice if you want.
Yeah, well, yeah. We twenty-five.
I'll take that back when you're done for my file, though.
Planning board public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given to the Templeton planning board. Try that again one more time. Notice is hereby given that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty PM to consider four warrant articles and make recommendations for the annual town meeting. One, to hear and provide comments on citizen petition to amend section three hundred dash eight of the zoning bylaws. Two, to hear and provide comment on citizens petition to amend section three hundred dash nine of zoning bylaws. Three, to hear and provide comments on citizens petition and amend section three hundred dash ten. Um, A, of the zoning bylaws. Four, to hear and provide comment on replacing section three hundred dash seventeen floodplain overlay district of the zoning bylaws in its entirety and insert in its place state recommended verbiage uh, as submitted by development services. All interested parties should be, should plan to attend. A copy of all above mentioned items is available for public review at the development services office located at Templeton Town Hall, one sixty Patriots Road, East Templeton, Mass. Zero one four three eight during normal business hours or by requesting copies by email at.
My email address. Yep.
Looks like I got a copy of that. Turns out they're close.
You don't have a copy?
Who's on?
Hold on.
That's been a long.
I think that's because you picked up your packet yesterday.
Right.
So let me just give you what I have.
I need to read the same, twenty-five, twenty-six.
So they start with twenty-five.
Okay.
And then this is the floodplain. That'll come last.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
You know what the major differences are between article twenty-five and twenty-six?
The difference, what's the difference between twenty-five and twenty-six? To me, it seems like it's the same exact read. I don't know what I'm missing. My. Only problem with these, both these regs is that. There's no. There's no benchmark for, for, um, for volume. In other words, it's basically saying all, everything. And. That kind of concerns me that. Okay, somebody doesn't want a big. Chemical plant boiling in bones, well, I get that. Uh, so this is. It's just everything, but there's no. There's no minimums where somebody can still do. A minimum.
If you just have.
You know. Um, just means somebody can't even make candles now, cuz it has something to do with wax. I mean, it's. Little things like that to stick out.
Right.
I mean, we start talking everyday products that people use. Um, lubricants and. Deep stock. Um, just. Heating oil, crude oil.
Yeah.
Uh, raw materials. Liquid fuels. Um, you know, whatever happens to people making their own little. Biofuels out of the, um. The cooking oils and whatnot in restaurants and whatnot, you know, so. Cuz that shut all those recycling operations down because of it. Um. I get what they're trying to accomplish. It just seems like it's kind of crammed together and. Um. One size fits all.
You can quickly, no. You can have a gas station.
Yeah. Yeah, I just don't.
As I hit said before too, I, I understand where they're coming from and I think it's. The idea is good. I just feel like the way it's written, it's too big. And it was not enough.
No, there's no little, there, there's just. There's no room for.
More inclusive than what we have now though.
What's that?
I think it's more inclusive.
Well, any type of these uses.
Well, like what's regulated technologies?
Hmm?
What's regulated technologies?
Oh, maybe we need an explanation.
Well, that's what we're saying, just. A lot of stuff that's.
We've been processing handling, so again, not being wise, but. Could you even have a gas station with this?
Has any of this been run by the, uh, town council or?
It's a citizen's petition. I don't believe.
It's a citizens petition and what you're doing tonight is.
We're just endorsing it or just.
Or not endorsing it. It, making comments to provide to the select board. Um.
Yeah, all right.
You did talk. At a different meeting. With some of the representatives who wrote this. Um, and I specifically remember you talking about special permits must be approved by voters at town meeting.
Right.
And that is included on both of those.
Right, well, that's one thing I said is that. That was, I was not a big fan of the town meeting. Town meeting floor. Controlling the permits. I mean, what, uh, uh, what's that say about a town? You never had a single business even attempt to come into town. If a, if a business has to go to town meeting floor to get their permits. What are we even doing here anymore?
Right, and then if you wanna open. You know.
Anything.
A, a quilt shop and you have to wait six or eight months.
A year to get a permit?
Right, and then if there's questions on the floor, you know, and then if you don't address all of that there, or if there's, you, do you have to wait?
But that's the process we have to all go through today in a, in our world.
A year for a permit?
Huh?
If you want a permit to side your house, you wanna have to wait, go to town meeting next year to get the permit to side your house?
If I have to, I, that's what I have to do. That's the way life has become.
Yeah, not for me.
I, I'm with you. I'm not, nope.
Not for me and not next generation. That's a, that's trouble. We're too, we're too governed. With all these rules and regs and bogging down and bogging down. You can't just go. What do I have to just go in the building inspector's office? You fill out the forms, you get a few signatures in town and fine.
But that's the point of having the planning board is so that if somebody wants to open. Of whatever business, they come before us, we ask the questions, we go through, we have our meetings every, you know, two weeks or twice a month and we can have extras. If everything has to go before town floor. That process is going to take, and you're gonna slow everything down. I mean. If every single business that was looking to get a permit that year is on the meeting for the town floor. And all the questions and everything, I mean, think of all the things that we deal with, with lighting setbacks, stormwater management, all of those things. The. The townspeople as a whole don't wanna sit through every, you know, stormwater management or stormwater drainage calculation.
Well, when we agreed to live together. In a close proximity of one another, we have to have rules and regulations.
Exactly.
Protect each and every one of us. It may sometimes make it more complicated for some people, but it's a routine that we've have to learn to go through now, I think.
And that's exactly why we have the planning board, we have building line, you know, the, uh, building inspectors, we, we have those things in place.
We don't, we don't have anything. Detail as, as this is.
As that?
Right. This is far more.
Right, but this is basically saying you can't have common farms across the street as a gas station.
You can't have what?
You can't have common farms across the street according to this.
Right.
The gas station. Because in this.
They put way too much livelihood in this here versus what they were just trying to accomplish.
Well, prohibited activity, um. Ha- handling of. Uh, liquid fuels. So you can't have handling of liquid fuels. That's what a gas station does, is they handle liquid fuels.
Yeah, but I don't think that prohibits that from occurring. And we all have to have access to.
You're gonna have to go to town meeting and find out when, when you can fill up your car, maybe once a year.
Prohibited Shelby. Activity including regulated technologies, treatment, processing, handling. So handling.
Right.
Of liquid fuels. Prohibited.
Well, then that's why I'm saying maybe we need to have the town council go through and look at the wording.
Citizen petition doesn't allow, doesn't give. Town council to, the, the liberty of having town council review it.
Laura, you said this is just to give advice, right?
Mm-hmm.
It, it's not gonna be enough.
Much like the advisory board. Does. They're looking for you to. Yay or nay? You take a vote. You're either for it or you're against it. Why?
I, I'm not opposed. To having additional regulations to help. Manage situations like what we're experiencing in Baldur's Hill.
We're not managing.
That's not the first time we've been.
We're not managing any situation in Baldur's Hill right now.
No, well, right now we're not, but we, cause their potential is there.
I don't need these regs to protect the town. Cuz the potential. The sky is falling in Baldur's Hill.
What do you need?
We just need, if somebody's gonna propose something, propose it and we'll find out, we'll, we'll figure out whether it's good or bad for the town. Be a special permit anyways. This language doesn't fit, this rec, this language doesn't fit for the town. It might fit for that one location, but we're not zoning one location. We're not even changing the zoning.
Again, I, I think, I just, for me, when I look at it. Regulated technologies is. Much too vague. I, I mean, what is a regulated technology? And treatment, processing, handling. I, I just, I feel like it, it's much too big and I feel like it's going to.
You know, I think it'll cripple it down. For future, for future building and businesses.
Do you think it's something you all should have worked on together?
Well, I think they just came in.
You did talk about it.
Which you're entitled to do. And I'm, myself firstly, I'm saying, um. No, I don't like it because it was no. Real thought process put behind it. The planning board, we haven't had time anyways from the time they did that. To even sit down and review it and start going through and say what really makes sense here. Um, but the, I, I just don't like myself dealing with the sky is falling mentality. Versus long-term planning for the town. And so you can't just run in just because somebody had an idea or somebody said something. There's nobody lined up at the gate out there. There's nobody filing permits to do anything over there.
With what we know.
There are no permits.
They have to file permits here.
That was verified by James McQuade.
What?
Central Mass. Region of Mass D E P. I contacted James McQuade. He's the top dog for solid waste. Recycling and solid waste. And he put in writing that there are no. Applications. For anything at this time.
I, I don't oppose having additional regulations. I, you know, I think there's. I just feel like the way these articles are. It's.
It's overkill.
It's not up to us to change this reg. This is a citizen petition. We don't. We can't, we don't take and pull from this. This is not ours.
No, I understand. I, I still think that having. Additional. Safety measures to prevent something like.
That's the proper ones. The proper ones. This is not it. They put too much stuff in there.
Can we, this could be a basis though. Evaluation of the, the language in this.
Well, I mean, this is somebody else's petition. Tell them to keep doing it till they get it right. Why is it up to us now?
My recommendation would be that we get further. Input on.
It, it's.
I, I don't think we should just simply. Deep six it because it's.
Being at the town meetings next month?
Hmm?
Being at town meetings.
This is, this is on the warrant. This is part of the warrant. You are providing commentary.
Yeah, that's it.
Well, my personal commentary is maybe that. Town council. Or some.
Town council doesn't.
I'm pretty sure they're not gonna look at that because it's, it's a citizens petition. It wasn't worked on through the zoning board of appeals. If it was worked on. As a collaboration. And put forward by the, I'm sorry, I called you the zoning board of appeals, by the planning board. Then it would be reviewed automatically by. Town council. Town council looks at this and makes sure that they have the right, um. Where it would be placed if approved. Kind of thing.
That's maybe the A G's gonna have to.
It does have to be reviewed by the.
My personal opinion on it is it should not be approved. As it's submitted and then. We could work with the individuals who are looking to move this forward as the, the board and then we could get town council to be involved in. Finding something that I think would work better for the town.
So would that mean we would invite that committee to come back and. Address that again and then. Make some reference to. And it, it further evaluated. I'd rather see something like that happen.
That's my thought on it.
Completely.
Well, I think as it's submitted, I think it should be completely.
I think rather than doing it, like they're doing it, they just have to just list. Um. Uh, we'll call it. Some of the stuff that they, they don't care for, whatever. Just list it. Under our definitions. Um, and then we can list it. On, on an article or within the bylaws saying that, you know, um. Stuff that's not allowed. You know, in town, whether it be the. Certain type of. Processing that they're talking about. But just to list every single chemical, including gasoline, petroleum, you know, just. Stuff that people deal with every single day in town. And then like Charlie said, it was, what was the other one you said? The, uh, um, um. The technology, what was it?
What, uh, the, uh, regulated.
Regulated technologies? You realize how broad of a scope re- that is?
It is defined, but I'm reading. It is defined, but it's still.
It's big. Wax, okay. You can't deal with wax now in town? Somebody wants to make a, have a candle shop in your garage or something like that, make some candles and make a couple bucks. I can't do that now either. It's listed here.
Even if somebody wanted to, they, they do have to come. Before us.
If I wanna make a candle in my house, last thing I do is call you down.
Personal candles, no, but if you're gonna make them for.
Well, they come to us anyways.
Right.
But, um, I'm not gonna shut somebody's candle shop down because somebody doesn't, somebody else doesn't want any. Well, not that I want either, um, of plastics, recycling, uh, somewhere else in town. So they put way too much stuff together. What just sticks to the point that they're trying to make? This is my own opinion. But me. Basically, um.
A lot of these things that come up like this, like the situation in Baldur's Hill come up with us, without us even knowing about it. Uh, anyway.
What do you mean?
Playing catch-up. If we don't have something in place to. Cover us.
We have plenty, we already have plenty of safeguards in place. It's called special permits. Blow your special permit, you don't get your special permit.
So what do we need to do?
So I can't do this for you. You have had a discussion. I, I'm assuming you're talking about twenty-five and twenty-six.
Yeah.
At this moment. You need to decide whether you support it. Or not. And take a vote.
Well, I make a motion that we do not support either one of these articles due to, uh, um. Big definitions.
I second that.
Uh, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of. Not recommending these two articles? Where's the input? All opposed? You're the one. Good, so we do not recommend these articles.
And, and what's the, and the other one is?
Twenty-seven.
Page twenty-seven?
No. Uh, page fourteen, article twenty-seven.
Is it for a certain site or?
Mm-hmm. It, it is for all of R A one district from what I understand.
Right.
Is there, there's no more information on this? There's no saying like how many.
That's kind of what.
In the road or screenings or anything? Is there, there's no more information on this? There's no saying like how many pieces in the road or screenings or anything?
That's it.
I don't like just the whole idea of having different zones in town to so people don't park their, uh, their trucks in everybody's residential neighborhood. I'd like to be the guy that bought a five, six hundred thousand dollar home and want to find out your neighbor's got three plow trucks. He's going to pack them in his driveway on his front lawn for the summer. That's basically what it's saying.
Right. Right.
There's no, there's, it's too vague.
Because again, I think, feel like this would come under the, our bylaws, the, you know, a major home occupation or something like that.
Right.
If you have.
But this is within the R A one besides. So now you only need a one acre lot. You know how small a one acre lot is when you get a house in a garage and two, three plows, plow trucks sitting in your yard? Right.
How is this, this states these are owned or operated by Mass D E?
Plow trucks, guys that have just plow trucks, just work for the state in the winter time. So they have their sanders and their plows. Can you leave them in your drive, can you just pack them in your driveways all over town? In, in R A one?
Yeah.
If you want to, if they had some kind of, you know, a, a mandatory screening or so far off the road or, you know. Not in sight of the, your neighbor or something, but.
Once again, that's where it comes under, if it's.
This is just, uh, this is just a blanket, um.
This would be a by right use.
Because right now you, legally you're not supposed to pack anything. I think it's over ten thousand or fifteen thousand G V W. Um, in a residential neighborhood, commercial vehicle, um, a lot of people do. Not really a lot, a lot of enforcement on it, but this is really. This is really throwing the big ugly ones out there on the front lawn, isn't it? Well, no different than I told that attorney when she was in here, I, we do what we gotta do for the town of Appleton and its, its residents and I. Myself personally don't feel that this, um.
I will say without having more information, I don't feel like it's.
They asking you to be allowed to store them or is it?
Yes.
And the storage.
No, so it can do it.
It would be a by right. As it stands right now, I mean, they could, if an individual had a situation.
Well, the thing is.
They come before us and ask for a site plan.
Indoor.
Maybe major home occupation, like if you are, you know, to park a truck, I think, I'm not sure. We'd have to look. When that comes through, but, right. My just saying, my thing is that you look at.
Mass D O T.
Well, look, look at the houses they've just built down here, or in Gartner, but right over the, couple in line on the left. Or the ones on Hubbardson Road. Those are like five, six hundred thousand dollar homes up on Hubbardson Road. Had somebody to say, okay, oh, by the way, I bought three plow trucks and stick them in there. I, I just, I just kind of looking at some of these subdivisions we have. Right. That we have some, you know, a lot of beautiful homes in there.
What if it's stored indoors?
Hmm?
I can't even put it indoors. Says here indoors or outdoor.
It says indoor or outdoor. Like it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't split it. Once again, it's a citizen's petition, so we can't, not up to us to change it.
The store indoors, it wouldn't be offensive.
But indoor or outdoor.
Most people don't have a thirteen, six, fourteen foot door on their house. You know, put the trucks in.
And, and you're not changing them while you're here, you're commenting.
Commenting, we just, we have to deal with.
Something that could come back at a later date that could be worked on.
Sure, yeah. Um, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse. I'm going to make a motion that we pass on this one as well. Do not recommend this one due to the fact that it's, um, um. It's not thorough, it's, I, I just don't think it's good for the, for, for the character of the town, for the neighborhoods, for the town. I mean.
I think it's too broad that it, it covers the whole entirety of.
What if?
I just think that's what I, that's why we have our commercial industrial zones and highway business zones is to take care of our commercial. People and whatnot. That's the reason why you zone a town. It's not just zoning and say, by the way, I'll just stick your truck on my front yard. It doesn't matter.
But for some people, it's part of their livelihood, their.
Yeah, and I think in those situations, I think we have the in place that someone can come before us. Somebody could have a five or ten acre parcel and, and, you know, have it room enough and we could say, hey, you know, as long as your lights aren't shining on your neighbor's windows, things like that.
Or if it's inside in a garage.
Right. So that's, it's more of a.
Was it the rule, the?
The way this is written now, you.
You couldn't, yeah.
You could park a, uh, you know, you could park one of Frank's trucks in your driveway, Dennis.
The big flowers.
You might have to cut your tree or two down to get it off the road, but, uh. So, yeah, I, I'm, I'll second Kirk's motion.
Okay.
Okay, um. Made and seconded and discussion on the motion. Seeing on all paper of the motion, which is to dismiss this or dismiss this. That's a four by four. What's the bond doing? We're pretty quiet.
Taking it all in.
These were about.
Life's, life's really getting slow. You just see you show up here. Oh, is that what it is? Um, and then the floodplain overlay district, Lori, can you explain that one out?
I can. So.
I know what it is, but just go ahead if you don't mind.
The floodplain overlay districts, they're not changing, but by updating. Our floodplain management regulation, it makes it. It puts a person in the place as a floodplain manager through the town. To be able to help people who are in the floodplains to get information. To possibly get reduced, um, insurance costs, to be able to go through. The, um, National Flood Insurance Program.
Okay. More of a readiness program too, as far as depending on where they're at?
Yes. And it, I would be working with N F I P, D C R, FEMA. Um, the person I've been working with is Katie Pate, um, at D C R. She is actually. A floodplain management specialist and the wording used in what's proposed.
Is the states.
Is the states. And it's been reviewed by town council and it's been reviewed by Katie.
Yeah.
To make sure that we're meeting what we need to meet.
All right. I make a motion, we accept, um, the floodplain overlay district, um, mapping and divisions as, as mentioned.
Second.
Me in second. We good? All in favor? Yeah, that's a discussion. Okay, yeah, we're good. Yeah, I knew that was coming. That's a, that's a good, we need that, we need that anyways.
We do.
Um, do we have anything else there?
I believe that's it.
Anything else? New business? Not listed?
No.
No new business, not listed? Frank said something.
Yeah, I got a question.
Sure.
Just riding around town. I see a lot of subdivisions that we passed years ago, years ago. Who's maintaining all the detention boards?
I.
And where's all the money that we had them with aside?
Oh, probably still in the accounts. We have a list of, um. Why don't I put that on the next meeting agenda and get the information that you're asking for?
Yeah, I do know the Sleckman years back, um, I know Carol Skelton was administrator or whatever was the time. I know they were stealing a whole bunch of that money from us. Whether they ever replaced it, I have no idea.
I will.
Crisis. We had like fifty or seventy thousand dollars and I know they took it to balance the books and whether they ever returned it. I have no idea. But that's a good question Frank had. So if you can.
Yep.
See if those accounts still exist and.
Well, much like.
Any lint balls in the bottom of the bucket?
I mean, they got a lot of, they got trains, this big.
Oh, yeah. No, I know. But it's up to, it's up to the town to, um.
So let me clarify, subdivisions that were not completed.
No, ones that were.
Ones that were.
Yeah.
Who's maintaining?
Oh, we might have money.
The retention bonds.
Were completed, maybe they.
You know, that's already, we've already, we already went down that road about seven years ago, as far as cleaning up all that stuff. Now it's just a matter of find out what we have for accounts in the storm water.
Okay.
Uh, detention base in the town. So I'm saying a hook pond and, you know, different ones.
Okay.
Sure, Carol, is it up to Carol to do that? No, Carol, that's not going to be Tom's work. It would be, um, I don't even know.
I'll check.
Okay.
I'll put it on the next meeting's agenda.
Alright, so I do remember we cleaned a lot of that stuff up because there were subdivisions in there from like forty years before. You know, it's like nobody even knew what they were, but they, we cleaned all that up a while back. So.
Um, I guess we'll work. Should we throw new business on our agendas just so that?
Yeah.
So just to clarify for you, you can't just throw new business on there. You have to have categories and you have to have what the subject is going to be. So if you have new business that you want on the agenda. You have to email me or call me and say, I'd like this on the agenda under new business.
Okay, I want new business next, next week. I want no more unfunded mandates.
Good luck with that.
That's it. We good? Um, did you have something, Mr. Barnes? So do you good?
Uh, no, but you guys ended too early.
You can go have coffee at Matt's. I heard him throw that out there.
I should do a journey.